Good evening and welcome to the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome all of you this evening. The first item on the agenda would be Commissioner's comments. John, would you want to start us off?
I don't have anything. I'm good.
Okay. I just would like to welcome President Linton, Richard Linton, to Kansas State University and to the city of Manhattan. We wish him and his family and children all the best, and we look forward to working with them together with Kansas State University and the city of Manhattan, and hopefully to meet him in person as Commissioners. Thank you.
I would just like to encourage everybody to consider donating blood. Apparently, there's a huge shortage nationwide and even locally here. The city had the blood bill last Thursday and Friday here in Manhattan, and so I did my thing here. And so if you haven't ever done it, you need to do it and help your fellow man, especially right now, because even the local hospital is having to consider postponing surgeries and stuff if they don't have the right amount of blood available. So now would be the good time to step up and donate some blood.
Today, I went to Topeka with the -- I'm on the board of the Area Agency on Aging, and they spend a day each legislative session talking to legislators about aging funding that the state gives and aging issues. And after that event was through, I looked for something else to do in the Capitol, and it turned out the K-State budget was in the Higher Education Budget Committee. And so I met President Linton and his head of Vice President for Financial Affairs, I'm going to call it, and heard the presentation to the Higher Education Budget Committee. And it was much of what we already know with the prosperity proposal, and thought it was good to hear it all put together. And then we also have heard that the General Sims, the commanding general at Fort Riley, will be moving on at some point. We don't know when yet, but he was hosting a town hall this evening. I would have liked to have sat in on it, but it's during this time. And so there may be some news there. We're never sure. But, okay. Commissioner's comments is completed. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the General Agenda for more discussion. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Seeing none.
I just want to make one comment. On the board appointments, I'm glad to see, you know, that Patrick normally is going to stay on the cemetery board. Most people don't follow the cemetery board, but they've done some great work the past few years, and Patrick's played a big role in that, like we ended up getting columbariums put in there. And then the other thing that most people aren't probably aware of is green burial sites at the cemetery. And so, you know, not a board that gets a lot of, you know, fanfare, but, you know, they meet and do a number of good things, and I really appreciate his service on there.
Exactly. I used to think that, I used to say, I'd really want to serve on any board but the cemetery board. But I think that in the last couple of years, I've realized that that's one of the more exciting boards, because they're considering new things. It's not just boring. All right. So are there any, does the Commission have any comments at all? Not seeing none. Are there any public comments on the consent, items on the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public comment period. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
What?
Brenda. Brenda, Brenda.
Brenda. Duh. I'm in the wrong place. Brenda, the City Clerk, Wolf, the City Clerk will call, will ask for our votes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Fisher Hassel?
Yes.
Fisher Ready?
Yes.
Fisher Butler?
Yes.
Fisher Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
The next item on the agenda is to consider, is a public hearing to consider issuing industrial revenue bonds for Meadowlark Hills for independent living units and underground parking projects. The presenter this evening is Jason Hilders, the Deputy City Manager, and if you would, take it away, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As you mentioned, we need to conduct a public hearing this evening and consider first reading of an ordinance to issue up to $25 million in industrial revenue bonds. This is to assist Meadowlark in their investment and development of 24 independent living units, along with some underground parking, roughly 36 parking stalls in that deck. Industrial revenue bonds are not, they do not create a financial burden to the city. They're often confusing because the lease arrangement between the city and the entity generates our name that is affiliated with properties. So if you get on Riley County GIs, you'll see city of Manhattan and a lot of locations that we have issued IRBs, but it is because of that lease arrangement. In order for Meadowlark to leverage these dollars and receive really a sales tax exemption on the construction, the city is in a position via state statute to act as that conduit, issue this amount of IRBs, and allow them to proceed with their construction. It's a fairly routine matter. It's something we've done multiple times for Meadowlark. Then a lot of other institutions within Manhattan leverage IRBs as well. Be happy to answer any questions about IRBs if you have them, but they've also recently considered their PUD master plan. The planning board has seen that recently. I'm sure there are members here of Meadowlark if you'd like to get into just where these 25 units are going to be and what they're going to look like and how they fit within the master plan. There's some folks here. I know Chris Nelson's here, and I think Olson actually assisted with that development, so Mark may be able to answer some questions if you have them.
So Jason, on the IRBs, just so people know, it's a, there's a fee that they have to pay in order to access, and there's probably a fairly significant application. It's not just a small deal. It's kind of a hassle to get them, and so it has to be worth your trouble to go through something like that. That's not any, any average business, really, wouldn't, IRBs wouldn't be a good option for most.
And by state statute, IRBs are not accessible by all industries. They are set to a specific user group. Meadowlark does qualify. Menko Windows qualified, GTM qualified, Farrar qualified. There's a number of businesses in the community that could and have, but you're right, not everybody, it's not accessible. A retail entity cannot come in and ask for IRBs. So there are limitations to it. You also have a policy as a governing body on the use of IRBs and what you will support and what you won't. And we get into tax credit housing with some of that in the past, but yes, they are one of the entities in the community that can leverage these. You know, some are just leveraging the sales tax exemption on the construction and never truly issue the bonds. Genesis is in that position. When they approached you, it was more about just the sales tax exemption, and we never go through the full issuance, and they carry that debt via an industrial revenue bond. But Meadowlark is one of our more long-term users, and I do think they intend to use that mechanism here as well.
How many of Meadowlark IRBs are we carrying? Do they wait till one expires and then get another one, or are there layers?
There are layers. There are multiple. I am not fully versed. Chris may have that answer.
We issued some bonds back in--
You have to go. I know we saw you about six months ago.
Yes. Chris Nelson, I'm the Finance Director at Meadowlark, and back in July of 2021, we issued some bonds that refinanced all of our existing debt. So currently, that is the only bonds we have outstanding is that 2021 debt.
Okay. So this is like starting new, or at least you're not juggling multiples.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. We appreciate it. Thanks for responding. Are there other questions from the Commission? With no more questions from the Commission, we'll now receive public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak?
It's a year.
I'm sorry. Okay. This is a public hearing. Thank you for straightening me out again. Okay. All right. We'll now receive public, it says comment, public hearing on this, on this item of business in the same order we did before, each speaker. Are there any speakers? Seeing none, I won't go into all that. Commissioners have had the chance to ask questions. So at this point, I will close the public hearing. I have a lot to read through, and I just get to scan it and pick out pieces, so sometimes it's slower. So at this point, are we ready for a motion?
Yes. I don't see any more comments here. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 021522-C indicating the Commission's intent to issue and first reading of the ordinance authorizing the issuance up to $25 million in industrial revenue bonds for Meadowlark Hills and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents supporting the issuance.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the Commission? Seeing none, I would ask Brenda Wolf, the City Clerk, to call the roll.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Fisher Ready?
Yes.
Fisher Butler?
Yes.
Fisher Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the General Agenda, and this is when Brandon Keizer comes to see us. We will be reviewing runway 321, construction final design, and consider moving forward with bidding the project, which is a CIP item. Brandon, welcome.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tonight, you're going to hear from Diane Holfer, the Lead Engineer for Olson Associates. She's going to give you guys an update on our runway design project. And then following her presentation and update, we'll seek approval from the Commission to get your guys' approval to go out to bid for the runway reconstruction project. I'll turn it over to Diane.
Thank you, Brandon. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
So we have been working on the design now for over 18 months, and we have the 90% submitted to FAA for review. Just kind of a little quick review of the project. If you've been out on the runway, you can probably see these large patches, pretty easy to see, but if you get out and walk around like an engineer, you'll see there's a lot of these little hairline cracks all over the runway. It's 43 years old, so it's overdue for a major reconstruction. There we go. Okay. Just a quick review of what we're doing on the project. So this is runway 321, kind of goes northeast, southwest. We are going to rubbleize the existing concrete, so you run a guillotine or a hammer over it, and we're going to smash it to smithereens, basically, put in, it'll become rubble, and then put, in the southern section, we'll put a leveling course and a base course of either asphalt or concrete on it with 10 and a half inches of concrete, and then on the north, two-thirds, we'll actually put the concrete straight on the rubbleized, the new concrete straight on the rubbleized concrete. So we're going to save some money doing that. Of course, all of that raises your runway elevation on the ends. It'll raise 12 inches in the middle. We're going to raise the runway elevation about three feet, and so all of the intersections of these taxiways get rebuilt, the crosswind runway gets rebuilt, all of those intersections there, along with all of the lighting and the navigational aids and all of the grading to go with it. So a lot of work to be done. I was here in August with the 60% design, so just wanted to give you a quick review of what's changed since August. The big news, the great news, is that we reduced costs by $7 million, and so that's good news. We got the FAA to approve a design alternative that they had originally rejected that allows that 12-inch concrete on either end with no base course, so that while we're putting on thicker concrete, having less base course actually saves you time and saves you money. So 12 inches on either end, 10 and a half inches in about one-third of the section in the middle. The crosswind runway is only seven inches. It's a short runway. You don't have very heavy traffic on that, so that has a reduced pavement thickness there. So not only did we save about $7 million, we cut construction time by two to three weeks because we're removing that layer in some cases. The other big change is funding. You already had the airport improvement program, the FAA program was tentative allocation from that program. Then in September, you were awarded the Defense Community Infrastructure Program funding of about $5.9 million there, so that really helped. That is paying for the outer 25 feet on each side of the runway. The FAA is paying for 100 foot down the middle, and they believe that's all you would be sufficient for your traffic. The DOD agreed to pay for 25 feet then on either side, so that's about one-third of the runway costs there that they will pay for. And then finally, Congress passed the bipartisan infrastructure law. In some cases, you'll see this IIJA, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. It's got a couple of different names out there. So they've also got an entitlement coming from that program. FAA guidance, we're still waiting to hear on that. We believe that if there's a shortage, shortfalls in the first two funds, that that million dollars in the bill money can then be used to help fund this project. We're keeping a close eye on that, and we got some more information yet today about how that goes. So a summary, the cost changes, you can see the $7 million cost change, which primarily benefited the city. So the city's share is 10% of the eligible cost, so that would, you would cut about $700,000 because of the cost savings, but then also the decent money added in there. So you're seeing the majority of it goes to the local savings. So I think that's really great news. Got to get my engineering out here, exactly what it's going to look like. The original runway underneath was 5,500 by 100 feet wide, put down in the early '60s, and then in 1979, a thicker layer of concrete was put on top. There may or may not be a layer in between in some cases, so we're going to rubbleize this top thicker layer, and that machinery, by the way, is going to be very loud, so when they're out there pounding the runway, it's going to make a lot of noise. In that southern, roughly two-thirds of the runway, there'll be a five-inch base course. One alternative the FAA has allowed, it's not, contractor will have the option for asphalt or a lean cement base course, so allowing that option is also going to reduce some costs there. Contractor gets to choose what option they want, and then 10 and a half inches of concrete on top of that, which may not seem like a lot of concrete, but you really have a pretty thick section up to two feet down that will carry all the heavy jets you've got out there. For the remainder of the runway, once again, we'll rubbleize the concrete, but then we'll put that new concrete right on top. It's a little thicker, but like I said, you're removing that intermediate layer that'll save time and money. The taxiways are going to tear out completely, and so we have to build up from the ground up, so we have to put in crushed aggregate base course, and the taxiways actually turn out to be the thickest concrete because they actually have less of a base underneath them, so it's kind of interesting how all of that works out. And then finally, the crosswind runway, the short runway, will be seven and a half inches, and the, there's this short taxiway echo that goes back to the hangar area, that you don't get the heavy airline traffic on those pavements, so they also don't have that base layer in between, they just go straight on the aggregate. Phasing is a big concern. How do we rebuild a runway without shutting it down? Well, unfortunately, we do have to shut it down. The layout of the airport just doesn't allow, because you've got kind of an X formation, you don't, if one of your runways was more off the end of the others, it would have made a difference, but it is what it is. The airport, the airport vision has changed over time and really grown, but, and I know this is a really busy slide, but one thing I hope you notice is September, we originally thought we were going to go into the third week of September with construction, and so now we're looking at completing everything by August 31st of next year. And how that's going to happen is we're going to start out slow, so assuming the contractor's awarded in August and all the FAA's paperwork gets in the right place, the contractor will have about eight months to do 35 days' worth of work, so we're going to be flexible when we can be flexible. They're going to start out building their stockpile areas, and they'll probably start bringing in materials. They've got to build a crossing over the EVT. They've got some grading of a ditch here. They've got the EVT grading, some tree removal in here. So, you know, they may come in and do a stockpile area for a week and go away for a month, and then they may come back and do the grading and the tree removal and go away for a month. So it'll be off to a slow start, all getting prepared for March 31st. So we're giving them 59 hours for the initial shutdown because we're going to mark a relocated threshold here to shorten up the runway temporarily, and so they have to do marking and lighting and all of that. So they have a very short amount of time to get in, get the marking device, get in lights, get some barricades, get everything done, and then they can move on to just working on the north end of the runway. So the first six weeks, they'll be working on the north end, replacing that concrete, doing some grading, finishing up the ditch and all of that, getting everything set up, do all their test runs. So everything, if they're going to do asphalt or concrete, we're going to have a trial run before we shut the entire runway down. And then as they work their way down the runway, when they get to the intersection, the entire airport will be closed for, we're estimating 68 days for the entire airport closure. I guess technically, the runways will be closed, the airport will be open for helicopter traffic. So this area of the airport will still be open for helicopter landings, but both runways will be closed.
I think I missed something. What are the little blue-green boxes?
So that is going to be the contractor's storage area.
Storage area. Okay.
Yes. And actually, they're going to expand out into here most likely, and so they're going to fence that off. You might have somebody bring in a concrete plant.
Yeah.
They're certainly going to stockpile their aggregate, all of their materials, park their vehicles, everything there. So when we're in this, let's see, I don't know if I can go backwards. Yep. Try the arrow. So for instance, in this case, they're going to use this stockpile area to access this area only.
Okay.
And so that's why we have two of them, and then when they're working on the other end of the runway, they're going to use the other stockpile area so that they don't have traffic crossing back and forth across the runways. So that's a big safety measure there.
Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, be sure and stop me if you have any questions. I think I know it so well, I forget.
No, I think you mentioned it, and I was backtracking.
Okay. So, yeah, like I said, both runways will be shut down for about 70 days then, and primarily focusing on getting the intersection done so that then we can go ahead and reopen the shorter runway in the middle of July there while they finish up on both ends of the primary runway. So business jets, general aviation traffic, smaller aircraft will be able to use the airport then, starting the middle of July. And they'll be able to access both the FBO area and the airline terminal, depending on what they need.
The American Airlines flights, too?
No. American has said they will not land, the runway doesn't meet their minimum standards for length and width.
So how long will they not be? Is that the 70 days, or is that--
Yeah. So the total time that the main runway will be closed right now is 108 days.
Okay.
And we have a meeting scheduled with them next week to talk about their schedule, their ticketing process, to make sure that we have been coordinating throughout the process, but as we get down to the finer points, and then we're looking at a very specific closure at a very specific time, we want to coordinate with them, and we still have time to make the changes if they, in some of these dates, so we may see that adjust by a few days.
So if they're, if you're shut down, if the main runway is shut down for 108 days, that means the parking won't be utilized either, since nobody's going to be flying out, and employees, the whole airport will be shut down, at least that part of it, because private and all of this, you said, would still be going.
Yeah. So city staff will still have things to do. We'll still have to have security checks, TSA requirements, federal Part 139 FAA requirements will still be in play. For the folks that work in the terminal, the airline's evaluating on what they're going to do with those employees for that time. More than likely, when something like this occurs, they usually ship them out to other closer regional airports that operate the same carrier. The two rental cars that are in the terminal, they both have their facilities within the city. They could choose to continue to operate out of the terminal. The terminal will still be open, so that pretty much addresses all the folks in the terminal. The other, the one other one I did miss was the TSA. TSA folks, when they're shut down, they'll also go to other airports, more than likely work at those other airports during this construction project and then come back when the airline returns.
And while you're up here, maybe I can ask at the end, but, so this is close to about three months, four months, I guess, for complete, but the, can you just vaguely, do you remember how much you're making as far as parking per month? I know we just increased it to $5.
Yeah. I don't have good revenue numbers, but that is definitely something that we'll be looking at because we are going to have reduced revenue in 2023 when that airfield is closed for roughly those three, three and a half months.
Yeah. Yeah. If you can provide that at some point, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And it's also an opportunity for airport maintenance staff to get out there, and, you know, if they need to do some patching on some of the other pavement, or they need to do maintenance on a building, it's a downtime where they wouldn't disrupt traffic, they can go in and take care of some of those, hopefully not too long overdue maintenance So, okay, there we, we backed up a little bit here. Here's the main runway closure. Then we're reopening the GA runway, except we're going to have to, we'll end up and close this intersection one more time for about four days to do grooving. We have to wait for the concrete to mature to a certain point before we can do the grooving and marking and finish up the intersection. So there'll be a little bit of a stop and start there. We've got, we'll have a lot of coordination with tenants, a lot of advance information to make sure that everybody knows and can plan accordingly. An overview of the project schedule, yes, we've been working on it for a long time. We have our 90% submittal here. We were hoping to get FAA authorization to bid in March. It does not look like that's going to occur, so we're probably looking at a late April bid opening. And even after the bid opening, after the bid opening, you submit your official project application. It still takes FAA 60 to 90 days, 60 to 120 days to get the grant issued. There's a lot of red tape, a lot of headquarters processing to go through. So we're estimating the grant is August, might come in July, but because there's such a long time between the bid opening and the grant, we're going to have the contractor hold their bid prices for 90 to 120 days. We'll set that hold period once we have authorization for that bid opening. So it does take quite a while, and then after you have the FAA grant is when you would officially award the contract and sign the construction contract. Soon as it's signed, they can get started on that small tree removal grading area, get everything set up, work through the winter as they need to, and then moving on to the runway construction will start April 1st of '23, be done by August 31st, which is the Thursday before Labor Day. So-- Thursday before Labor Day. So we'll be very anxious to get all that done. We have a lot of interest from contractors, a lot of large companies that have done projects in, in multiple states with large runways. So we're excited to see that happen. And then just a final overview of the entire project. It's actually a three-year project. You've got a grant for the design in 2020, you've got a second grant for the FAA NAVID in '21, and now in '22 will be the big grant. And so that's the total budget that we're looking at for the entire project. And as Brandon said, what we're here to ask for is authorization to bid. We, we also need FAA authorization to bid. But we're trying to do some advanced planning and be ready. When we, we get that authorization from FAA, we can pull the trigger and get Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
So, two questions. So what is the difference between the 10 and a half inch on the ends and 12 inch on the, how thick the concrete is? Is, is it because when the planes land, you need to be thicker? And then, I'm just curious, what makes the difference between the bottom third is one way and the other two-thirds is, is a slightly different thickness of concrete?
So just looking for some cost savings and eliminating that, if we eliminate the base, the five inches of base course, we're trading off a five inches of base course for one and a half inches of concrete. And so it's actually a cost savings there. It's just the way that we have to level out the center part of the runway that we have to, we end up and reduce it to 10 and a half inches. So we did life cycle cost analysis and looked at the alternatives and, and found the most cost efficient way to do that.
So what is, what is the life expectancy of the runway that you designed for? 20 years, 30 years, 40 years again?
The FAA process is a 20-year design life, but honestly, I've seen a lot of concrete runways last 40 years or more if they're, if they're built out. And this one has lasted 43 years. So it wouldn't, 20 years is minimum, and then I, I would expect it to last much longer.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other questions from the commission? I think, Lynn, you had a question.
No, just a, just a comment. I, I was curious about, you know, the airport being closed for this period of time. And I, I think you may know something about that. Some of the folks at Marshall Field that I know thought that it might be possible to actually do commercial air service out of there and use our terminal and the TSA people and, and all the people that are going to not be working there during that timeframe. And it's really the reverse of what you just saw last week with the deployment to the National Training Center, where they trucked over the soldiers and the baggage and loaded them at our airport. We'd be doing sort of the reverse, something, you know, I've, I've been involved in a lot the time I was in the Army, and it, it seems like it might make sense. And then that way, we'd still have air service. Maybe it would be reduced, not as many flights, but we would have air service as opposed to not having any for, you know, a period of time. And that could have some long-range detrimental things on getting customers back here. And we're also going to lose money during that timeframe. So it's just, and I know it's difficult because you'd have to coordinate that with DOD and FAA and the airlines. And it's not easy, but you've got a year.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and, and I'll address just one part, part of that comment. Yeah, I am aware that, you know, that's been floated out there. One significant hurdle from that is the way that the FAA designates airports and the, and the type of airports that can be used for commercial service. So Fort Riley's Marshall Airfield is a private airport. It's only used for DOD, so public technically can't go in there. Our airport is a public use airport. It also falls under Part 139, which is the commercial regulations that the FAA imposes on us. And so in order for, you know, that to even be possible, all those regulations would have to apply to, to Marshall Airfield. The FAA would have to grant Marshall Airfield the option of turning to a commercial service airport. Definitely some very, very significant logistical challenges with, with performing that.
Yeah, I just, you know, they could pursue it, just make it temporary, you know, not, not permanent, because I'm not sure Fort Riley would want, want that to be permanent. But, but, you know, just temporary. And I understand, the bureaucrats are always there to put obstacles in the way. But, but it, you know, in my mind, it looks doable to me.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we've been talking about this runway project for about three years now. We're getting closer. And, you know, there's been a lot of ideas of how we're going to continue to operate or have commercial service operations with this project. And there's been ideas thrown out about potentially building a parallel runway. And we posed that to the FAA, and the FAA said, we're not going to support it, we're not going to pay for it. A lot of logistical challenges. Another option that was thrown out is converting taxiway alpha, that runs parallel of that runway, and strengthening it and widening it, you know, temporarily so the airline can operate while Diane and the contractor, you know, redo the runway reconstruction. And the FAA looked at that and said, we're not going to pay for that. You're welcome to do it yourself. I mean, it's very expensive. There's also some other challenges with the safety requirements and the distance requirements to that new terminal building that we built, and also the FBO. So we did look at, we, we have explored a lot of different alternatives. Back in 2018, when the FAA knew, we first started this project, the FAA said, hey, you got to do a planning study. A lot of you are aware of that study, and that's when we looked at those alternatives. And unfortunately, because of our layout and, and how things are shaped, this is the only way that the FAA is going to proceed to move forward with us.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I saw that, you know, back then, and it's too bad that none of those other alternatives worked out. But this one, we really didn't discuss, you know, at great length back then. And, and I think this construction thing is about as good as it can get. I mean, that's outstanding, that we're, we're saving the money and, and you, I, I just don't think you can do a better job than what was presented here. So I'm impressed with that. So this is really a separate issue. I mean, no, no problem with the construction and all that, the way it's laid out. This is a, just an additional mission creep thing to, to change how we would do air service, if it's possible.
Have you ever heard of Diane, of the military working with the municipal airport to help solve a problem like this?
There, there are some locations that are joint base, where it's a public airport and airport base, kind of one on each side. But no, I'm not aware of anybody who's transferred their air service over to a military base.
Just for a short term.
Short term, yeah.
I do appreciate the cost savings of the $7 million that you indicated here and the timeframe of reducing it by two to three weeks. I'm just going to be cautious. Typically, there's like chain orders or weather, all kinds of things happen. But it's, I'd rather see that now so that we know there's some cushion, quote unquote, to make up for those things. Because as things are going, it seems like more, everything is getting more and more expensive. And so I think even a year, I mean, everything's changing on, on a daily basis for all types of construction items, labor, and weather is always out there. So I do appreciate the presentation, and I think, I don't, I'm supportive of it.
Thank you, thank you. And we, we do expect, we hope our estimate is plus or minus 3%. But even 3% is million, is over a million dollars. So, so yes, we, we know that bid prices are fluctuating, and it's very hard to target that. So we'll open bids and lock in our prices.
Are there other, yes, please, John.
I was going to say, thanks for the presentation. Since I recently came on, I got to go through at the airport, everything with Brandon, so kind of had a little preliminary. And I'm really glad to hear that there's a number of companies anxious to do this, business, unlike everything else we hear, where we can't find anybody to take on jobs. It's glad to know we've got multiple people.
We are giving them a year to get started, so I think that's really.
That helps.
I figure you guys have got one more year to figure out some way to pay for that last 4300, $4,390,000, so the city's not on the hook for any of it. So that's your new challenge here.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask if there is, thank you very much, Brandon. Thank you very much, Diane.
Thank you.
Uh huh. I, I wonder if any member of the public wishes to comment on what we've been discussing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. I think we've asked all of our questions, so we're ready for.
Sure. Mayor, I authorize the city administration to issue a request for bids for the recon, for the reconstruction of runway 321.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there additional comment? If not, Brenda Wolf, the city clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennissel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this point, the next item on the agenda is an executive session. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I move that we recess into executive session, discuss the purchase of property for fire department purposes pursuant to the exceptions set forth in KSA 75-4319B6 related to preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real estate, and resume the open meeting at 8:10 PM in the City Commission room.
That would be 30 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Brenda Wolf, would you call, city clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennissel?
Yep.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We will recess for 30 minutes and rejoin you in this room before long. We will recess for thirty minutes and rejoin you in this room before long. Our executive session has now officially expired. All right, it's 8:10. Our executive session has now officially expired.